Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I convene as Walworth County Plan and Zoning Board. Is there any old business? New business? Yeah, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Got a second, any more discussion? Here none, all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion passed. Convene as Walworth County Board of Zoning Adjustment. Is there any old business? New business? Yeah, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second. Got a second, any more discussion? Here none, all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion passed. Convene as a Board of County Commissioners. Approval agenda, gotta add the weed and pest agreement.
And remove the June seventeenth minutes.
And then remove the seventeenth of June. I'm gonna add them right underneath the claims. I have a ticket motion. Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
Do we need to add discussion regarding the project?
Yes. If you're going to make a payment today or something.
We're not.
Okay.
The final walkthrough hasn't been done yet.
I would put that on there. You're gonna discuss it. You're gonna have to discuss payment.
Okay. And we'll just add that discussing the landfill project. I'll add that right underneath, uh, underneath the weed and pest. Anything else? God, Diane Howell wanted to be added to the general public forum today, but she's not here, so.
No, she wants to be added to the next meeting, but.
What's that?
She wants to be added to the next meeting, Jamie and I are gonna, I'm gonna visit with Jamie about that.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion on the floor, I need it a second.
I'll second.
Got a second, any more discussion on that? Here none, all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion passed. Public forum. Fourteen, consider motion to approve county commission minutes of June sixteen.
I so.
Yeah, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Got a second, any more discussion? Here none, all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion passed. Everybody have a chance to go over the claims?
I move for approval.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Got a second, any other discussion on that? Here none, all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion passed. Okay, the weed and pest agreement. What's this off for, Becky?
It's just the grant agreement with the state that needs to be signed in order to get reimbursement.
That's just what it is every year, isn't it? Yeah, I take a, a motion for that.
So moved.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second.
Got a second, any more discussion on that? Here none, all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion passed. Landfill project.
Um, I just spoke with Lucas and it sounds like they're gonna do the final walkthrough this Friday. So we didn't, there's no payment request submitted at this time.
I know they were receiving the grass the other day.
They've been done for a while.
Yeah.
But then Lucas had, his wife had a baby and it was not working out for Randy and Lucas at the same time. So it sounds like we're gonna do the walkthrough Friday.
Do you have anything else on that, Jamie?
How much is their? Cause almost all of, I would assume all their money is gonna go to the holding holder on the.
Yeah.
Okay. So just make sure when we pay that, we pay it to the right person and all that business.
I think Lucas is very much aware of all that. Anything else they add with that? All right, then we'll move on to sixteen. Or Toby, do you have anything?
I don't have anything, no. I was asked to be here by my ownership and for the discussion, if there was one, and that's where we're at. Thank you for your time. Jordan's feet. Like we knew it'd be, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to number sixteen, I take a motion to enter the record session regarding personnel matters. Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Got a second, any more discussion? Here none, all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion passed. Marcy, did you turn that off?
I require a record session at ten oh three. Uh, let's go to twenty-one, we gotta do that bid opening. Just going to run.
Yep.
I'm gonna go to one, then I gotta redo that. That was awful, Howard.
This is from Diamond Mowers. This is for Challenger tractor. Didn't want anybody getting this. Twenty-seven, one oh one or something like that.
This bid is from Diamond Mowers for, for the Challenger cat, Challenger tractor, twenty thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Close to commission field.
I would move we, we'd accept that bid.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. Need a second?
I'll second it.
Got a second, any more discussion?
Last bid we had was twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven, something.
One oh one. What do you think the value of that tractor was, Mower is?
The caterpillar people said on the lot it would be worth forty thousand.
So we'd be better off rejecting long bids. And keep it? Caterpillar. I'm just, they're gonna just come up and buy it back.
They don't already. And obviously, they don't want it. Unless they would have bid.
That's just a bad thing that happened on the first time. Yeah, they're hitting it can happen.
So, if you accept.
So can we go for the difference?
Correct.
Between this bid and if we accept this bid, we can go for the difference.
Correct.
On the celestial for.
Correct. Correct. Plus our cost of advertising for the rebid.
Should that be part of the motion?
No, um, what we'll do is, I would just deal with this bid right now. Put the, uh, issue of the previous failed bidder to pay. And then we'll make a motion there to, uh, state, this is what the initial bid was, this was accepted on this date. And then, uh, they were notified, no response. On this date, commission made a decision to rebid and then on this date. Pardon? Put that on the next agenda, that's right, we'll just go through the whole process. And then motion to go after them for the difference between the, uh, accepted bid, if you accept, and what their bid was.
Any other discussion, Art? Here none, all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion passed. Gary, you just wanna do your stuff right away?
I'd like to do your.
I figured you did. So long ago.
Really? I'll make it really tough. I've been negotiating some awesome gravel pit options. Uh, one entity indicated they'd like to see a dollar ten cents a ton on royalties. Our current value is, uh, uh, one point zero zero one eight, one eight. That's what we're paying on royalties now. Uh, does the board support an increase in royalty payments to a dollar ten cents a ton?
I don't think you guys have much choice, dude.
I wanted to bring it to your attention.
If it's hard, okay.
Ten cents.
Somebody will be.
Or one point four.
Will be in the same tree as Kamakani is.
Right, that's what I said.
Somebody will come in and buy that gravel. We don't tie it up. I hate to spend the.
I guess I support it.
I had circulated a bid option and had it signed from one entity. Uh, and that was the current value, oh, one point zero one eight one. And, uh, we haven't mined yet, so whereby I'm gonna make the addition or the amendment to that bid option with the bid option people have signed written, so. The rate for royalties in Walworth County, if you agree, are a dollars ten cents a ton. And it calculates to like a dollar fifty-one cents if you adhere, so. So be it.
Yes.
And I have, uh, permit to occupy right away from web. I recommend approval, uh, in the motion. Uh, I would, uh, I'd like to have it worded that, uh, pipeline to be encased for attached. For attachment to the permit to occupy right away form.
More time, but I mean. Isn't already in there? But kind of their little bylaws, if that's how they do it, or?
In my opinion, I can look into that, Scott, but in my opinion, there's no charge for, for permits to occupy right away for web.
Okay. But I, I thought that was always in there, I was wondering why all of a sudden now, I don't. You know, I had to, I bought gyms. I mean, I paid for that, but that's just given, okay?
It's all part of that blank adhesion.
Okay.
Same thing.
Okay, any other discussion on that? Here none, all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion passed. Anything else, Gary?
I just, go with one follow-up on that, down the road, if you guys feel that we should make a payment for occupied right away. I'm one more to it.
Well, I, I guess, to me, I guess, I don't believe they're any different than me or any other contractor, we, we pay for it.
And I'm all about fairness, but the, the, I mean, with you, on the legal side, that as a blank adhesion allow, uh, Occupy, occupation of right away, uh, above and beyond what everybody else has to do, so.
You will have talked about that.
Okay. Is that it here?
Yep.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Add a backer? There's a man somewhere. He was in the building, yeah?
I thought they. There's a man out there.
Yeah, who was close there?
Hmm?
Who was close? This is big.
No. Four hundred and eighty-nine dollars off. I was holding a ninety-nine dollar off yesterday. Four hundred and eighty-eight?
Oh, God.
Morning.
Morning.
Um, so COVID nineteen update, uh, again, I don't have a whole lot. Um, we have seen our numbers climb a little bit in the last week, um, so that's been, uh, a little bit concerning, but, um, seems like we've been holding steady unless the new numbers when they come out show anything different, um. The other thing, I guess, so I just kinda went in for you guys, what I've been doing a little bit the last, um, since last time we talked. Um, it's a lot of resource things, um, but this last week, I was able to deliver about seven hundred isolation gowns to the care center, sixty face shields and a thousand N ninety-five masks, um, through supplies to the Department of Health. I have more coming, I'm just have on standby, cause those seems to, to be kind of the things that are, we're going through, um. I went down to Pier on Friday and got a Alaskan, uh, medical tip for our hospital, um, cause they're gonna be kind of amping up just to have an outdoor clinic, they've been coming out to the cars and things like that, but, uh, just with the weather and everything going on, they wanted something for their staff to be out of the elements a little bit, so they're gonna be getting that set up, um. But other than that, just kinda staying busy, um, with meetings and, and kinda just keeping up on the supplies and what's going on in the state. And as things are needed, um, just kinda filling those needs as best I can, so.
Are you doing much for testing?
Um, so they were doing mass testing, um, at the care center because of the two cases that I heard that they had, um, there. So they were amping up their testing, cause they were just doing random testing, um, on employees and, and, uh, things like that. Um, but because of the two positives that came out of there, um, they were gonna be doing more mass testing at that facility, um. So I kinda mentioned the Department of Health, if they thought about coming into our county at all, they'll start doing mass testing. Um, but I'm still kinda trying to find a person that I need to talk to, see if we can get that lined up a little bit, um. There is a blood drive that's gonna be happening on July fourteenth, um, in Mulbridge. And they're gonna be doing, um, the testing for the antibodies, um, on, for people. So I do know that that's gonna be kind of something that's gonna be interesting to do, to see how many people are gonna have that test feedback that they have the antibodies for it, so that's gonna be telling too, but, um.
Are we just looking with, with everything that happens last week with the rodeo, the carnival? There's fishing tournaments going on, a lot of people that are here. Are they testing anybody in the public around here?
So, they're, they're just doing their testings as people, um, you know, call and, and they're, they come out and they do their testing out in their vehicles right now. Um, they don't allow anybody unless it's absolutely necessary to the clinic area and emergency area, um. You know, it's gonna be, it's gonna be telling in the next week or two about, you know, what's removed, you know, the damage that could possibly have been done uh, because of the events that were, were held in, um, in Mulbridge, but, um, as of right now, you know, we're not seeing anything, cause it takes about fourteen days roughly to start seeing the symptoms and stuff, so, you know, it is gonna be, by the time we visit next time, it could, you know, we could be completely talking about a different story, so.
And others on to active case in Walworth County?
You know, I didn't actually look today, I, I looked yesterday and there was fifteen total that had been done, um, and I think there was six that were still active, that hadn't been changed over. Um, I was gonna look before I came in and I didn't have time, but, um, most people were all kinda supposed to be, um, quarantining at home, um, I have heard of reports that some of them are not, um. So it's just, it's kinda one of those things that we just keep telling people, you know, if you don't, if you still, you know, if you don't have to go out, uh, don't, if you don't have to mingle with large groups, people don't, make sure, um, you know, you're washing your hands so frequently. Cause that's where the big thing is, is that, um, is that, you know, people are going into these places and, and touching things and, um, you know, touching their face and not having a mask on and all that kinda stuff, so I was really encouraging, you know, at any given time, um, to really, you know, have that good hygiene and, and everything still too, and, and that social distancing, but, yeah, it's, uh, it's gonna be interesting, cause we, I know we had a lot of people in our county this last week, a lot of people, and it wasn't just the, the last few days, it was the whole week leading up to start seeing the traffic increase and everything, so we just people are around for at least a week, um, coming from all different areas. I seen just about being near every license plate that you can imagine, so, um, so, yeah, it's.
Except for Canada.
Yep.
So there, um, it shows currently there is not any active case in Walworth County, but if you're out of the county and you get tested here, that doesn't fall in Walworth County's numbers, right?
Yep, so if you are, um, so how they test it is, um, if you were like, both say go to Bismarck and you would go get tested, those numbers would actually come back down into Walworth County. Um, but if somebody from Bismarck came and ended up into our county and they got tested, it was positive, their numbers will go back to Bismarck. Um, and so it's only the people that are residents of Walworth County. The other thing that did, now that you mentioned that, that did come up, that I had a few phone calls on, where it was a process of how you are notified, um, if you've been in contact with somebody who has tested positive for COVID nineteen. And, um, to the Department of Health, what they'll do is they'll kinda start going through your history of where you've been, who you've been in contact with and those kinda things, and they'll actually physically call those people and say, hey, you have been in contact with somebody who's tested positive, um, just monitor your symptoms for the next two weeks or something like that, so. Um, they have a really good tracking system, um, as far as letting people know, as good as the memory of the person who tests positive. Um, but I've heard of reports that there was some people, um, that did come from another state, um, and they did get tested positive while they were here over the week, um, of the fourth of July. Um, but they were from a way south state, um, but one of their family members had tested positive, they were notified that they had to have been tested positive, went to the hospital, they had been tested positive, and they had been in Mulbridge for, for a few days. So everyone knows where they had been, but those businesses would be notified and, and things too, so, um, but it's just, it's just how it's gonna happen as people start moving around and the numbers aren't gonna go up, but, hopefully not too much.
So if you donate blood, you can make the test for that antibody. Good way to say you got the antibody.
Yep, so I would really encourage, you know, if you guys can, um, the, the Walworth County, um, there's a shortage of blood, there always has been, but now even more than ever uh, because of everything going on, um, if, whoever can, whoever's available, um, get out and donate, um, because not only are you giving to, you know, people in need, but you also get that antibody tested off, so.
Where's that at?
It's, the, the one in Mulbridge is gonna be at Family Worship. They usually have it at the event center, or rated at church, actually, usually, so.
It's three of us that might be doing that.
Is that?
I said three of us that might be doing it.
I donated, I haven't been long enough.
No, you have been ten years.
Oh, no.
Ten years?
That's what they told me.
One year.
No, if you had cancer.
One year. I donated last time they were there, so I can't donate this time.
I just told you ten.
No, they told me. Six weeks.
Well, if you have, but if you have, um, it's six weeks, if you donate, you can only donate every six weeks, but if you've had some medical issues and stuff, sometimes I can obviously go out longer, if you're able.
I would donate double. Whatever that is, and then I.
Yeah, yeah, if you donate double, then it's longer, um, but, yeah, so it's kind of. All of that, most guys have any more questions or?
Anybody have any questions for Mama?
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, consider motion. Consider motion to, uh, the resolution twenty twenty dash zero seven, authorizing execution of contractual documents with the state of South Dakota for receipt of CARES Act funds to address the COVID nineteen public health crisis. Let me read this whole thing.
Really? Get married. I'd agree.
Walworth County Resolution number twenty twenty dash zero seven, a resolution authorizing the exec, execution of contractual documents with the state of South Dakota for the receipt of CARES Act funds to address the COVID nineteen public health crisis. Whereas pursuant to section five zero zero one of the Coronavirus Ad Relief and Economic Security Act, published L. number one six, one one six dash one three six, Division A, Title B, March twenty seventh, twenty twenty, the CARES Act. The state of South Dakota has received federal funds that may only be used to cover costs that, A, are necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to the Coronavirus Disease twenty nineteen COVID nineteen. B, were not accounted for in the public most recently approved as, were not accounted for in the budget most recently approved as of March twenty seventh, twenty twenty for the state of South Dakota, and C, were incurred during the period that begins on March first, twenty twenty and ends on December thirtieth, twenty twenty. And whereas Walworth County acknowledges that the state of South Dakota, in its sole discretion, may retain full use of these funds for the purposes delineated in the CARES Act. And whereas Walworth County acknowledges that in order to provide financial assistance to counties and municipalities in the state of South Dakota, the state of South Dakota, in its sole discretion, may allocate CARES Act funds act on a stationwide base, statewide basis to reimburse counties and municipalities as delineated herein. And whereas Walworth County seeks funding to reimburse helpful expenditures. County seeks funding to reimburse helpful expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19, and whereas Walworth County acknowledges that any request for reimbursement of expenditures will only be for expenditures that were not accounted for in the budget of, for twenty twenty county most recently approved as of March, as of March twenty seventh, twenty twenty, and whereas Walworth County acknowledges that it will only seek reimbursement for costs incurred during the period that begins on March first, twenty twenty, and ends on December thirtieth, twenty twenty. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Commission of Walworth County that the Chairman of Walworth County Commission may execute any and all documents as required by the State in order to receive CARES Act funds. If is further resolved that any request for reimbursement will be only for those costs authorized by the State, that, one, are necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19, two, were not accounted for in the county budget most recently approved as of March twenty seventh, twenty twenty, and three, were incurred during the period that begins on March first, twenty twenty, and ends on December thirtieth, twenty twenty. It is further resolved that the county will not request reimbursement from the State under the CARES Act for costs for which the county previously received reimbursement, or for which the county has a reimbursement request pending before another source, approved and adopted the seventh day of July twenty twenty.
I'll need a motion for that.
Zoom move.
Okay, you got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Got a second. Any more discussion on that? Here and now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold, say nay. Motion passed. Nineteen, consider motion to approve the signing of local government COVID recovery fund reimbursement agreements.
All that?
It's not that resolution, is it?
No. It's just not agreeing.
Yeah, just agreeing, you don't have to read that.
Yeah.
Yeah, motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Got a second, any more discussion on that? Here and now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold, say nay. Motion passed.
Yeah?
Yes.
Need a phone call, uh, I wonder if you guys can finish, consider a dollar fifty cents a ton for real.
Instead of a dollar fifty?
Dollar ten. Instead of a dollar ten, a dollar fifty.
Oh, my tongue. That's fine. What's that make it a yard, dollar ninety? Dollar eighty?
About eighty, ninety.
Oh, it's more than that.
It's part now. Forty cents a ton, the increase of power, it goes to sixty cents. Probably goes to two, two ten.
Two oh six.
Two oh six, that's pretty good.
And what's the reason?
Obviously, you had offered it before.
No, no comment. Not happy with getting it up to a dollar ten? Determine that the rate, the going rate is a dollar fifty. From who? I, I don't know. I, I, I'm, I am, to be professional, it's not in my best interest to say who made the comment that the rate should be a dollar fifty.
Only a bother to discuss. Just gonna say it, they're not gonna make any more of it, so we are gonna be starting to pay for it.
It's in scarce, it's getting hard to find, and, and, and it's gonna get going up.
Geographically, isn't Agronom Ariel where we've always had a gravitop? And it's been absent for five years? But, in my world, if a dollar fifty is good for them, a dollar fifty is good for everybody.
Yep.
Forty cent increase on seventy thousand tons is twenty-eight thousand dollars, right? Is it my hands, or?
I guess I would think it is.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Gary.
Twenty-two, old business. New business?
I'd like to put on the agenda for next, on the difference from Caterpillar, go against, uh, Regis Better. Put that on the agenda for next meeting.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, like to call a special meeting for tomorrow.
At what time?
One o'clock. Enter into executive session for personnel matter.
Okay.
We can, we would have a minute or two to discuss that with Jamie before we have to make our agenda tomorrow, right?
Yeah.
We can call a special meeting tomorrow, and then Jamie, what do you have for the meeting, and add, add some stuff to our agenda if we need?
So we can ask, we can ask you about the agenda until one o'clock.
Yeah.
Individually.
Yeah, or by ones or twos.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, and then, um, does it, because you're gonna schedule it for one, and then, yeah, you got it.
It's twenty-four hours.
Yep, as long as you're within that, yeah, on that twenty-four hours, yes.
So we just call a special meeting, or have put on the?
Actually, what you would do is, if you have questions for me? Um, ask me in right after the meeting?
Right.
And then, then let Becky know what you want to have put on there, because it's gotta be put on there, what you're planning on doing, other than an executive session.
Right.
So if you're gonna come out of your executive session and make a decision on something, then you need to put that decision on there.
Technically, right now, all that we have to do is call a special meeting for tomorrow.
And get what agenda items we want to meet by the one.
Yeah, and for sure, you know it's gonna be an executive session, correct? So.
Put that on there, I'll wait.
It's gonna be an executive session. We can have it on there.
Yeah, you can have it on there, not call it, but you can not have it on there and then call it, so, best to put it on.
Right.
Yes. And I have one other thing, under new business, we already talked about putting, um, Solbrose in, um, for next meeting too, right? When they're, uh, because the, the payment should be.
Hopefully by next meeting, yeah.
So how about if we tentatively put it on there?
Yeah.
Because we're gonna have to, um, because the payee, I think, is the, of the whole amount is going to be Transource rather than Solbrose, since they have their lien, so we should definitely do that separately than through the regular bills, so if they have that on there, and they pass the inspection and all of that, then that way they have notice of the fact that this is what we're going to do, so.
On that, in that case, does that check get made to Transource only, or do you put Solbrose on there with Transource's name on it?
That's what we need to decide on how we wanna do it, um, that's something we're gonna have to figure out ahead of time, because technically they have a perfected lien, is their argument for the, uh.
Because we have an agreement right now with Solbrose that we have to fill, that's why I didn't know if you tie the names on there because of that, or how's that?
But, yeah, they have their mechanics lien, and I think their mechanics lien exceeds the amount of what we're going to pay, so honestly, we're not disputing their perfected mechanics lien, so we would just pay Transource solely, um, but that's something we wanna get clear with Solbrose, to make sure that we don't have any issues prior to us agreeing to whom we're gonna make payment to. And that's my understanding, that Solbrose doesn't have a problem with doing it that way, but we definitely need to verify and make sure that we have the check right and all of that, that's why we should do it as a separate item, since we do have a mechanics lien and, um.
Well, and I think they'll have to submit a payment request for their final payment anyway, so.
Yeah, they're gonna have to submit a payment request, and then we're gonna have to notify them that we have a mechanics lien, um, on any payment that we're going to make, and that we have come to the decisions, accounting that, uh, Transource has a perfected mechanics lien, and that therefore we're going to direct payment to them, and if they need to object to us, then they need to do that, and, and there's also one with Slater Oil, but I, uh, Transource was first, and I think their lien exceeds the amount that we are going to pay anyhow, isn't that right, Becky?
Yeah.
So, that's how we should work that.
Um, the other thing that I forgot to mention when I was up there too, is that on July seventeenth, um, I have an all-day training over in the Mulbridge Fire Hall, um, it's an EOC training, um, it's, uh, the company that I go and take all my business courses with is called Blue Cell, they actually do a contract with the State of South Dakota, um, that thirty counties in the State of South Dakota, they would come in and do, uh, like, functional tabletop exercise, um, referring to an EOC, an Emergency Operations Center, so in case we ever did have a big incident in our county, um, we would open this up so that it just wasn't one person doing the job, it, you know, it's the financial department, it's logistics, getting resources, and communications and things, um, so they're actually gonna come in, do a class from eight to noon on the seventeenth, um, to kind of get everybody, so you know the positions, and then from one to five, we're actually gonna do, utilize what we learned, um, and make a full functioning EOC, um, and so that's where you guys, as elected officials, kinda come in at, uh, because you are the decision-makers for the county if we would have a big incident happen, um, so it's kind of good if, if one of you, two of you, uh, could possibly be in that exercise, I would really appreciate it, just because then if we did have to call an EOC and, and open it up, um, you know, you guys would have some knowledge of how it runs and operates, and kind of what your, your jobs and where you fit in at, so I just wanna invite, um, whoever could make it, or that interests you, um, that, that's going on from, you know, all day on the.
I think that we got a jail advisory board meeting the same day.
Well, yeah, I had, I had heard that, and I, and I didn't have my, a big choice on, on days, it was kind of, we're coming, this is the day, you know, find your people, um, and so.
You email that to me?
I can email, yeah, I can email a few, um, I have a few, um, responders that are kinda coming in, I have a, a, a mass message out to those, um, all those departments, um, and I've kind of been getting, you know, trickling in here and there, people that can, um, and my goal is to just fill all those seats, because I'm required, um, by the contract to fill those seats, otherwise the, the county will get charged for their services coming in, um, and so it's kind of risky to say, yeah, we'll do it, but I knew that it was gonna be something that was good to bring into the county, a training, so that we just had more knowledge of if we did have a big incident happen, and it doesn't matter if it's this COVID going on, if it's a tornado, whatever, but, um, this is really gonna be a, a pretty good training, I think, to just have a better understanding of how it all operates, and, and, so.
The main portion is eight to noon, correct?
Eight to noon's the, the class, so they kind of give a briefing on, you know, what the operations of it, what your job would be, um, a view into all the, um, the jobs that are involved in an EOC, um, and then we'll actually utilize what we learn in the afternoon, so do plan.
Basically, I ask two hundred.
Essentially, yeah, it is, um, but we'll actually, instead of just going in and them saying, you know, here's kind of a scenario, work it out, here's kind of what we learned, we're gonna actually, from what I understand, because they've done a few of these now already, um, that you really get into it, and they keep giving, adding on to the scenario and adding on, and you really have to utilize all these forms and things that we've talked about in these classes, I'm gonna actually really get to, to, to see it operate, and, and the goal is, if I could get enough people, is that we would actually have responders on one side and an EOC on the other, so it's kind of like live, how they would be requesting things and communication and whatnot, um, but I just, I'm really excited about that opportunity that I came in, so.
I actually will be here for my position, so.
Okay, sounds good, so, yeah, we have like a financial position, um, logistics, communications, um, operations, all that kind of stuff, so, um, it's just, I wanna invite you guys, just like I said, because we're gonna eventually be turning to you guys, if this is something that we end up opening up, because ultimately it's your decisions on kind of what we're capable of, what we can do, and just to have that knowledge at this level would be, would be really good to have, so, um, so that's, that opportunity that's coming in, so.
Where's that at, Mulbridge?
The Fire Hall, I'm gonna have it there, yep, since it's a big enough area to kind of spread people out and things, so we get enough people, so, plan on all day, if you do, but I'll send it to you.
All ready. Thank you. Any other new business? Here and now, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Ooh.
You got a motion on the floor, I need a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold, say nay.
I did.
General, you and somebody else can go down and talk to Jamie.
Yep.
Yeah, I did, I did thank her.
Perfect time.
Yeah.
Yep, we got it.
We gotta, we gotta get this done. Who's gonna go with you? Again, who's gonna go with you?
David, do you wanna come down?
Yeah, I will.
We'll be right back, then.
We're not gonna have that heavy.
Oh, we're not, yeah?
We're gonna do it next meeting.
Okay.
We gotta get, we gotta walk this down.
See me?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
That's good.
Yeah, we gotta get this done.
Oh, I forget you were.